...part of the meeting, recognitions. We go home after the recognition. Standing room only here tonight, beautiful. Okay, first recognition, I'd like to just acknowledge and recognize that's Teacher Appreciation Week. I mean, words really can't describe, you know, how appreciative we are of what teachers do every day. I mean, you guys are in the thick of it and you do, you know, a great job with, you know, what you don't have. Let's put it that way. So I just wanted to thank everyone and, you know, just acknowledge how appreciative we are on behalf of the Board of Education and everyone else. So just, uh, thank you for anything that you guys did. All right, also, National School Nurses Day was on May 10th. What's that today? So National, National School Nurses Day is today, May 10th. Um, they will be attending the, um, next week, uh, May 24th meeting, so we could recognize that. Okay, Major Nancy Bates, official presentation of appointments to West Point, to Joseph Waldron and Michael Hollis.
Good evening. Thank you, thank you for allowing me to represent the United States Military Academy and the United States Army this evening. My name is Nancy Bates and I'm a 1984 West Point graduate and live in New Hartford. I volunteer as a member of West Point's SEAL Force, the boots-on-the-ground presence for the admissions process to West Point. We have a local liaison for the candidates and deliver work in their communities. Given many of us have successfully navigated the West Point admissions process and served in the Army, we understand the gravity of the decision and commitment. For those that may not be familiar with West Point, the United States Military Academy was founded in 1802 at West Point, New York. It is our nation's oldest military academy and the nation's oldest engineering school. West Point remains the oldest continuously occupied military host in America, the nation's premier leadership institution, and consistently ranks academically as one of the top educational institutions in this country. In over 250, 215 years, our reason for existence has not changed. Our mission is to train, educate, and inspire the Corps of Cadets so that each graduate is a commissioned leader of character, committed to the values of duty, honor, and country, and prepared for a career of professional excellence and service to this nation as an officer in the United States Army. Every West Point graduate earns a bachelor's science degree, a commission as a second lieutenant in the United States Army, and serves for a minimum of five years on active duty and in additional three years in the Reserves or National Guard. West Point is a federally funded institution with a cap total enrollment of 4,400 cadets, or approximately 1,100 in each class. The West Point appointments that are being extended this evening are presented on behalf of the President of the United States of America. Our appointees this evening each receive a fully funded four-year scholarship, which includes tuition, room, board, military uniforms, computers, full medical and dental coverage, life insurance, a monthly salary, and generous military and academic individual enhanced development opportunities that will send them across the country and abroad. Although it is impossible to place a definitive monetary amount to these appointments, each individual appointment easily exceeds several hundred thousand dollars. Each year, I am privileged to meet, mentor, and coach a tapestry of talent, and the two young men we will honor this evening are outstanding examples of the diversity of the cadet population. Each of these young men earned the West Point appointment by meeting the same rigorous criteria, but they achieve these milestones in different ways through their own unique individual talents. That included academic qualification, leadership qualification, physical fitness qualification, medical and mental health qualification, and a nomination. Our selection process is very different from the standard college application. Our decisions are not based on family, social status, or connection, but the competency and character of the candidate. We require our candidates to not only meet the criteria, but sustain that collective criteria over an extended period of time. On average, the milestones that must be met take over a year to complete, but require a lifetime of preparation, growth, and development. These candidates truly reflect our nation's finest. Danbury High School has not had any students appointed to West Point in recent years. It is extremely unusual for any school in the nation to have two students appointed in the same year. To place it into perspective, we had 224 candidates in Connecticut open their applications for West Point for the class of 2021. These candidates represented dozens of Connecticut's public and private schools, preparatory schools, and homeschooled students. Only 19 candidates were eventually admitted in the state of Connecticut for a selection rate of 8%. This is also the national average selection rate, one of the most competitive collegiate selection rates in the country. To have two students from the same high school appointed is truly an evening of celebration. It is also a testament to the quality of the education and leadership that Danbury High School provides its students. Often I am asked, how do we determine who to pick among the tens of thousands of students that apply to West Point each year? Both these young men represent what West Point seeks in our future leaders, a well-rounded scholar, leader, athlete, and community citizen with firing the gully and a passion for service. For anyone that is familiar with the application process for a service academy, they can validate it as lengthy, multifaceted, stressful, and demanding. And like so many situations in the long and winding road of life, events can occur at a split second to condense a candidate's opportunity for admission. Many candidates applied, but few were chosen. Tonight, two of Danbury's own have earned the opportunity to stand among the best and the brightest in this country. Well, Michael Hollis and Joseph Waldron, please come forward at this time. Although we honor Michael and Joseph this evening, we are here today only because of the adults that have played a pivotal role in their lives, molding them into a leader of courage, commitment, and accomplishment. Growing up in a increasingly complex world, both Michael and Joe both have been influenced, supported, and guided by the legacy from family members, those dearly departed that live on in their memory, as well as their parents and living relatives. So thank you for the pivotal role you played in their lives. This accomplishment was earned by Michael and Joe, but you made it all possible. I would also like to thank the teachers, coaches, and other adult mentors that left footprints in these young men's lives. It is obvious the positive influence and lifelong impact you've had. From your personal examples, it enabled Michael and Joe to persevere and overcome obstacles, never to give up on their dream, demonstrating strength of body, strength of mind, and strength of character, essential elements that are required to succeed at the academy. As Michael and Joe graduate from Danbury High School, your legacy will be forever present as they build upon the stable foundation you provided. In closing, it is essential to remind everyone of the path forward for Michael and Joe and why these appointments are so unique in the presentation. From the onset, Michael and Joe understood that West Point is only a means to an end, and that end is a legal oath to support, defend, and protect the Constitution of the United States of America. This legal oath requires Michael and Joe's willingness to go anywhere in the world, and if required, quoting the words of President Kennedy in his 1960 inaugural address, "To be willing to pay any price, bear any burden, meet any hardship, support any friend, oppose any foe, to assure the survival and success of liberty." These are freedoms that we enjoy and often take for granted every day. West Point was not a full school, as either young man was speaking, for the free education, the prestige, or other superficial reasons. Each clearly understands the gravity of their decision. Michael and Joe share a common bond of every young person that chooses to wear the military uniform of this great nation, and that is the commitment to serve, to put others before themselves, and to be a part of something larger than themselves with an unyielding determination and a humility that transcends individual accomplishment and status. Upon graduation from West Point, Michael and Joe will be commissioned as officers in the United States Army. They will be entrusted with the responsibility of leading our nation's sons and daughters around the world and follow the footsteps of West Point graduates before them, such as Robert E. Lee, Ulysses S. Grant, Douglas MacArthur, George Patton, H.R. McNastor, President Dwight David Eisenhower, and countless others, the majority of whose names are not recognizable to many of us, whose contributions are equally as important. In today's environment, where Webster's has officially recognized the word selfie, it is refreshing to see the young people such as Michael and Joe are truly selfless in their focus. Only about 8% of the nation's population are veterans, and less than 1% of the US population living today is currently serving for a country in uniform. This 1% serves, protects, and defends the other 99%. Michael and Joe have volunteered the next 12 years of their life to freely give of themselves in service to this great nation, initially as a cadet and ultimately as a commissioned officer in the United States Army. This is an act truly of selfless service and humility. Each candidate must stand alone on his or her own record of merit and rise above all others to earn a place in the long gray line. Michael and Joe are no different. Standing in front of you today are not superheroes, the two young men that had a vision and worked extremely hard to be the best they could be. Michael and Joe, as you prepare for your journey on our day for July 3rd, it will not be easy. Cell phones and the internet did not exist during my cadetship, so I couldn't miss what I never had. But for you, six weeks of not being able to text, be checked on your social media accounts will likely be a slight adjustment for you. You are both leaders, but for most of the next year, you will be told what to do, when to do it, how to do it, and where to do it. At times, you will feel sleep deprived, hungry, emotionally and physically spent, and perhaps you'll even question if you made the right choice. When those feelings creep into your psyche, dig deep and reflect upon why you made this choice. In the long and windy road of life, this is just a short passage that will test your resolve, build upon your character, and prepare you for the greater challenges ahead. We live in a rapidly changing world in each daily new cycle and reflective of the seriousness of the domestic and international environment. Serious challenges demand serious leadership, and West Point will prepare you for that mantle of leadership. When the going gets tough, think of the other 92% of the candidates in the nation that wanted to be in your shoes but didn't earn that appointment. Remind yourself that you are part of a very elite group and reflect upon the excerpts of the words of General Douglas MacArthur as he spoke to the Corps of Cadets on May 12, 1962, and I quote, "Duty, honor, country." Those three hallowed words readily dictate what you ought to be, what you can be, and what you will be. They are your rallying points to build courage when courage seems to fail, to regain faith when there seems to be little cause for faith, and to create hope when hope becomes forewarned. The long gray line has never failed us, and were you to do so, a million ghosts in olive drab, a brat happy, and bluey gray would rise from your white crosses fluttering those magic words, "duty, honor, country." To you, Michael and Joe, I pass the torch, hold it high with pride and never allow its flame to be extinguished. In alphabetical order, Michael, Joseph, Hollis II, on behalf of the President of the United States of America. The Admissions Committee of the United States Military Academy at West Point is pleased to announce this presentation of appointment to Michael Joseph Hollis II to be a member of the United States Military Academy Class of 2021. Signed, Robert L. Kazler Jr., Lieutenant General, United States Army Superintendent. Congratulations. Joseph Seamus Waldron, on behalf of the President of the United States of America. The Admissions Committee of the United States Military Academy at West Point is pleased to announce this appointment to Joseph St. Seamus Waldron to be a member of the United States Military Academy Class of 2021. Signed, Robert L. Kazler Jr., Lieutenant General, United States Army Superintendent. Congratulations.
I'd like to bring the parents up also, give them a round of applause. Boys, come on up this way. We want to shake your hand inside right after you take your photo. Come on the inside, sir. Watch the corps, watch the corps.
Excuse me, Major Bates, if I could ask, within your graduating class, how many women, how many females were within your graduation?
There were 82.
Eighty-two? And currently, what's, what's kind of the ratio now?
Um, it's about 225. So when I was there, it was about 5%, now it's about 25%.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, that was awesome. In Connecticut Association of Board of Education, Cade Student Leadership Awards. First up, Broadview Middle School, Grace Dykman and Ian McDuff.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You guys got me scared. I am so glad that I'm here on a night like this. This is the best part, we get to see students sit up just amazing in there. Isn't it nice to see our great kids doing great things? Isn't it? By myself. I am so proud. First of all, this is my project, Broadview. So to do a program like this is really a big honor. And to also talk about these wonderful students. We do a process at Broadview where we actually hold an interview. And we have the kids write a resume, and then we review it, and then we select students that receive different awards. So I am so happy to say, I'll start with Ian. Ian McDuff is a student, he's been on the honor row since sixth grade. He has a wonderful grade point average. He's also an athlete, he plays soccer. And the cool thing about Ian is, I've known him since he was in second grade. His mother used to work in the district. And so I've watched him grow up throughout the whole time, and then when I come to Penruck and see, and see him now, I'm just amazed. He's grown up to be such a wonderful young man. So we're really excited to have him receive the award. Now, if you think that's cool, watch this. Grace Dykman. I've known her since kindergarten. She's a Penruck student, and I had her, watched her be promoted into sixth grade, visited for two years, came back, get to see her in eighth grade. She's an amazing student. Once again, she's been on the honor row since sixth grade. Not only that, she is a competitor, I mean, she's vicious. When it comes to lacrosse and any sport, anything that Grace does, she's competitive. Um, she's also a voice of broad view, she does the announcements in the morning for us. She's just an amazing all-around student. But the best part about this young woman and this young man is the fact that he has an amazing, supportive family. Um, you cannot ever hold back the fact that family is what helps us move forward in our school setting. So I'm really thrilled because their parents are here. I know Grace Dykman's here, just raise your hand. Wave it high. I'm not sure, I think I saw you wave it, wave it like that.
Major Board, Broadview's winners.
Okay, Honors Park Field School, for Rhea Patel and Connor Dumout.
Well, we'll start with Rhea. She takes her education very seriously. She's an honor student and has been. She maintains a high average in every class. She plays in the band, has been on the Yearbook Committee all three years. She's been a member of the Student Council and currently is involved in the National Junior Honor Society. And they do a lot of volunteering and a lot of activities that they are involved in. So we're very honored for all of the things that they, that they do. She always enjoys helping others, and that is the key part of the Honor Society. They are involved in a lot of fundraising, and they help other students, and she is actively involved in all of that. Not only in school, though, outside of school, she plays basketball, she swims, she plays tennis. She's involved in Pullman, which is a center where she practices her skills, and she volunteers to tutor other students. So that's just indicative of the type of person that Rhea is. It's not about her, it's about all the others that she can help. And she certainly is a positive role model, not only in school but out in the community. So congratulations, she does a great job. Connor, the teachers say, is a leader during group work and projects. He's a member of the National Junior Honor Society, which again supports many different organizations, such as the American Cancer Society, Toy for Tots, and other local charities. He's a member of the Student Council as well, and they're pretty involved in the school, trying to plan activities for all of the students. And for the past several years, Connor has participated in the school play, which we are very proud of. Uh, this year, the Wizard of Oz. Outside of school, he is a member of the STEM Scouts, which has an emphasis, as you know, on, on science, technology, engineering, and math. So we are sure that as well as he's done in middle school, he will continue to, to make us all proud in high school and middle. So congratulations, Connor, good job.
Okay, Westside Middle School, Zoe Caliñonis and Alec.
Chedishkevich. Chedishkevich. Thank you all for being here. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Labacho, who is eligible to attend tonight. I actually had to ask them who they were because as the assistant principal, I don't get to see them a lot because I'm usually the only one with kids who aren't making all the best choices. So I'm very excited to be here on a positive note, and I have something that was written up, the teachers about each of the students. The CADE organization was designed to recognize middle school students who exhibit exemplary leadership skills. We recognize Alec Chedishkevich for this award for this very reason. As an eighth grader, Alec has proven to bring thoughtful commentary, a responsible work ethic, and an open line of communication into the classroom. Alec sets a great example for his peers by promoting student advocacy, taking responsibility for his work, and acting as an accountable citizen both in and out of the classroom. We are proud to award Alec Chedishkevich with the CADE Organization Student Leadership Award. Zoe Caliñonis is a quiet but effective leader in sport. She leads other students by example and is always willing to do, to help her peers and her teachers. Zoe exhibits the qualities of a true leader because she is always focused on doing her best, advocates for herself, asks questions, strives to reach goals, and encourages others to do the same. Zoe does exceptionally well in school and has earned honor roll status in all trimesters that she has attended middle school. Besides academics, Zoe excels in other areas as well. Zoe is a member of the National Junior Honor Society at Westside Middle School Academy. She is also a peer mediator, where she helps fellow students work through problems and struggles. Zoe is a proficient dancer and takes lessons in Greek dance, jazz, and ballet. Zoe also participates in the sport of volleyball. Zoe's heritage is very important to her, and this is evidence through her ability to speak Greek fluently and her membership in Goya, Greek Orthodox Youth of America. Through Goya, Zoe and other members give back to the communities through various service projects. Zoe exemplifies a leader, and we are proud to have her as one of our students at West.
Next up, DHS, Danbury High School. Amal, that doctor, the last name. And Benjamin Schuster.
I told him I'm just gonna go with Amal. Is Nudalissi DHS, her family's first year in Danbury School, from Syria, and has made an awesome adjustment for the more school. Her first encounter with the US school system was at DHS. For many students, anybody coming in could have used the size of DHS as an excuse not to succeed. Instead, Amal has merged with the resiliency and determination to succeed and be an example for her younger siblings. Every day, Amal demonstrates innate ability to empathize with peer issues and use meditating skills when interacting with others. Academically, Amal has earned all of her possible credit so far this year, and as I look today, is on track to earn everything. She has also learned how to self-advocate and make use of the DHS resources, such as the Student Tutoring Center, Directive Study Halls, Teachers and Media Center. In the short time that she's been here, Amal has been able to navigate the size of DHS, develop an understanding of how the school works, make sense of the curriculum, and has made many friends. Her focus, perseverance, and commitment to the school and family are the reasons why she's been presented this table work. Ben, on the other hand, just got lucky. It's an honor and privilege to present this to Ben. Ben's a junior at Danbury High School, and during his tenure at Danbury High School has demonstrated outstanding leadership skills and has a positive impact on DHS. Academically, he's achieved at a very high level and has done this with nothing less than just plain hard work. Currently, Ben is taking three AP classes, and when I called to make sure that he was coming tonight, every time I tried to find him, he's taking an AP class. Along with that, he has three honors classes, and in doing so, has maintained an impressive 3.5 GPA. But beyond the classroom, Ben's concern for others and leadership is on display every week as he is an integral member of the Unified Basketball Program, a partner program with Special Olympics. And additionally, in Ben's spare time, he plays volleyball, I mean, I'm sorry, he plays tennis on our boys varsity tennis team. Uh, his resiliency has shined bright at Danbury High School, and we believe that his leadership ability and constant desire to improve the lives of the people surrounding him makes him an excellent recipient for this prestigious award.
Okay, from Aces, Yolene Ortiz.
Typical ace passion, we're gonna surprise you with two of the other students, and also was able to attend, so. Uh, we have Yolene Ortiz and Gianni Alessandro. And I understand if you don't have the award for your performance.
And I understand if you don't have the award for him, I think we can get.
We have the award, he just wasn't on the list.
So I'll start off with Yolene. First of all, Yolene graduated in January, so she was able to fulfill her. I think it's safe to say ace was our go-to student. Just to give you an example, Sandy called on her in December to run the office for the Saturday interviews. So she came in on Saturday, ran the office and kept all of its teachers in mind, made sure that everything went smoothly. Her attendance was phenomenal at ace. It wasn't so great at Danbury High School, but she had a complete 180 turnaround when she came here. Excellent grades. It had nothing to do with. But she excelled her grades, took extreme pleasure, I believe she was honor roll, high honors. She really quickly became student of the month this year, was a student, got the Aces of Diamonds Award, one of the months for having high academic success attendance. Across the board, she was an award winner and actually was, both Gianni and Yolene were unanimous who were selected by the Aces package. So that's Yolene. And Gianni also did a complete nice turnaround attendance-wise from Danbury High School to ace. Again, nothing to do with Danbury High School. Matured a little bit. Gianni is also a hard worker. He is also on track, passing all his classes, regular attending. Last year, he came to school a couple days when he wasn't feeling well. Motivated enough to get up and walk to school even though he was sick. So that was something, you know. One of the proud things, Gianni's taken tremendous pride in himself as well as the building. You know that he, we've had him to the elevator. As we talked about that, Gianni took a part, took a part himself to help the custodian out daily until a little issue arose contractually. Where Gianni took, he, again, he was garbage, first floor all the way to the third floor so the custodian didn't have to lug the large garbage cans up and down the stairs. He stayed after school and helped the custodian out and he meets teachers in the morning, helps them carry their bags, helps them carry their bags at the end of the day. He just, he goes above and beyond to give back. Yolene also went above and beyond to give back. She helped serve from start to finish with Thanksgiving Day. You all know how big that is. She really kicked, you kicked Glenn aside and took over the deserving.
Okay, Dr. Harry Ross Bellis, selected by the Connecticut Science Teachers Association to be this year's recipient of the Connecticut Science Educator Fellow Award.
I have a distinct pleasure of recognizing, hoping to recognize Dr. Ross Bellis. A number of us, actually Lea and I, a number of other folks were able to go up to the CADE to watch the awards ceremony. There were combined science teachers and Connecticut ended science administrators. And there were a number of awards as there are tonight among the partners. And folks really celebrated very well and excited about every recipient. And so when the names were called, they came up in front of the podium, big round of applause for each person. When the parents made, when they just started with Dr. Harris, as far as they got, there was an outrageous standing ovation that just went on and on and on. So the presenter had to stop and they just kept waiting. They just kept waiting. Eric gets up to speed, continued again. And Harry, I know he, one of those other awards is behind the screen over there, has a whole living of these things. But this is the highest one. They asked Eric to explain the highest award that state can give. And we also asked him to talk briefly about the ceremony regarding the hand that he got. Because it was just amazing that everybody in the room, and it truly was a moment in, at least a moment in Connecticut history for science because they asked the folks around there, anybody who has been touched by the effort of Dr. Harris Bellis, please raise your hand. Basically, we had not many in the room. And there were scores and scores and scores of people. So if you explain what this is, then more importantly that way.
Okay, thank you very much. I am humbled by the award and when I first was notified that I was to receive it, I thought, why me? And I thought, really? Couldn't it be any better if they picked somebody else who's really deserving? And as they announced my name at the awards ceremony a week ago, they talked about some of my contributions to science across the state. And I've been a member of the Connecticut Science Teachers Association. I've been a board member of Connecticut Science Supervisors Association. I'm on board of the Connecticut Science Safety Network. I've been a member of the District Advisory Committee to the State Department of Education. For the past 11 years, I've been working for the Connecticut Science Center facilitating workshops in inquiry and next-gen science standards. I helped to found the Connecticut STEM Foundation and Connecticut STEM Fair, which is in rural Fairfield County and rotates around. So I really have been part of the science community for quite a while and I'm very much honored by this, by this award. And so they gave me a certificate, but they also gave me a sterling silver pin. And part of the ceremony was they invited people in the room who had been past Connecticut Science Educator Fellows to come up and they had sort of a pinning ceremony, so they placed that on my lapel. And again, I was honored, there were probably about a dozen people in the room. And I think I met them, the youngest of them, so it's nice that this tradition is passing along. So one of the other things that I got to do that night was to confer several other awards and I stayed up at the microphone. And I'm gonna do the very same tonight. I'd like to transition over to talking about some students and their recent wonderful accomplishments. So as you know, we have Connecticut Invention Convention, we have the program at a number of schools, a number of elementary and middle schools. And this year, we were once again very successful with the results with the students in the schools and at the district event. And those students were then selected to move on to the regional. This was the first year that they did a regional. Typically, the state invention convention is held at Campbell Pavilion and has been fully at capacity for the past few years. Last year, in fact, they had to select another room for two students and they just had third grade through eighth grade in the main Campbell Pavilion. So this year, by having four regional fairs in advance, they were able to have only 700 students at Campbell Pavilion. And I believe we sent probably 10 or 15 students from Danbury to that. And I'm here to honor four of the students tonight and to talk just a little bit about their projects. So first, I'd love to recognize Ryan Seaman. He is from Savvy Rock Elementary School. I can walk around with this, right?
Perfect, thank you. So the judging took place in the morning and it was the last Saturday, April, July, April 29th. And I was working for the Connecticut Academy for Science and Engineering, bestowing awards on some of the seventh and eighth graders. And we only had to review about 110 projects. We gave about 15 awards out, so our scope is limited. But I wanted to see the students from Danbury as well. So after a brief break, after most of the judging was completed, the students were able to go and get lunch and then there was a public display. And Ryan was the only one that I saw next to his project and next to his board and he engaged me right away. And he told me about his project and he had developed basically a net slingshot that he could use to draw back and send any sort of a ball into the air. And he could use this for softball or football or any number of different, a tennis ball, something like that. And he had developed it because his mother had a sore shoulder and so this was going to enable her to like catch with him and with others. And I was really moved by his reasoning for creating this and his methodology in coming up with one in one draft of it and repeating it and working through until he had really that working prototype and his presentation. I knew right from the time that he took me on the side and told me all about his project, I thought, yep, he's gonna be one of the ones. He's gonna be one of the ones. And sure enough, as I was sitting back behind the judges podium, I waited and I heard his name called and I thought, yes. Good job for Ryan. Julia Falstrom is from South Street Elementary. So Julia's project was a solar foam cover. And my understanding, I didn't get to see the prototype, so I'm likely to get some extra information from you about this. It's a flip cover so that it kind of keeps the sun from shining onto the foam itself. And at the same time, that flip cover is a solar cell so that it can charge. And at the same time, there's some sort of a transistor in there so that if a cloud passes through, it'll reverse charge and it won't uncharge the foam. How am I doing so far? An amazing project and again, well crafted, well designed, well presented, and selected at the state level as a finalist. So congratulations Julia. The next one is Faith Edwards. Now Faith's project is an emergency teddy bear. Doesn't that sound like we all need one of those? So my understanding of this one is that it has a flashlight in its belly. It has a pocket in the back. You can put snacks and a water bottle in there. It has a compass and a paw. How am I doing? Okay. So this is the teddy bear that you want with you in any emergency. And if you can imagine, when the red cross descends on a community and families are in disarray and they're in panic, what better device than something that's going to be really approachable for the students and also have a lot of the safety features that they will need. They're gonna need water, they're gonna need a flashlight, they're gonna need some comfort. So really, well done, well designed, and obviously well presented. In addition, Faith has been selected to go on to the Nationals. Okay, I've seen Nico LaRosa from King Street Primary for last. So Nico is a kindergarten student at King Street and his project is the No Pecker Egg Collector. And Nico developed this project because he has chickens at home and of course, he needs to get under them to see if there's an egg there and he wants to collect that egg. And the problem is that the chickens tend to peck hen when he's trying to do this. So he developed a plastic sleeve so that it fits around his wrist and he's able to get underneath the hen and he's able to check and retrieve the eggs. Now, one of her own who's not here, Mrs. Alberts, who's actually a judge at Invention Convention and Nico was in the judging circle that she was judging. And so she had a nice early eye for talent here. So congratulations to Mrs. Alberts on her. One of the things that I think really sold Mrs. Alberts was when one of the questions came up was, "Well, I see you demonstrating how this works, but suppose I'm not right-handed like you, suppose I'm left-handed." And Nico gave it a thought for a moment and he slipped it onto the other arm and off he went and demonstrated, oh yes, even a lefty can not get pecked when they are collecting eggs from the chicken. So wonderful project. And as with the others, he advanced from our district convention convention to the regional at WestCon, was selected at WestCon to go to the state finals and was selected as a finalist at the state finals. And he also is going to the Nationals. So for everybody, thank you so much and congratulations.
Can we get you all standing over here so we can take a picture? All the winners and their parents come over. We're gonna have to get you in a little bit closer so we can. Is anybody?
Thank you very much, everyone. Congratulations. Okay, public participation. We have no one sign up for public participation.
The Board of Education approved the items on the consent calendar exhibit 17-58 through 17-62 as recommended.
Second by the Florida. On very. Spawley School, Danbrook Elementary School. Is there a mic there for you?
Yeah.
No photos of you here, can I say this word?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for having us this evening. I'm Rachel Wade, I'm our teacher at Pembroke Elementary School, and I don't know if loud enough.
No.
I'm telling you, I'm loud, it's just natural. Anyway, I'm Rachel Wade, I'm our teacher at Pembroke Elementary School, and this is Dr. Apple, our principal at Pembroke Elementary. And as I said, thank you very much for having us. Our presentation about Pembroke Elementary School reflects the armature of our school improvement plan. But as you know, well, most of you know, I talk a lot, and Dr. Apple does as well. So we will try to keep this as brief as we possibly can and go according to our presentation.
I'd like to also recognize Mrs. Wade as my administrative intern this year, working on our administrative O ninety-two certification. So definitely was wise enough to invite her to present with me this evening. We will zip right through these slides, and you certainly can ask questions at the end. Again, this does follow the armature of our school improvement plan. You can tell what components of our school improvement plan are. There's just so much to spotlight at Pembroke. Obviously, this is a little slide on some literacy data that we have included. We are still in the window for makeups, so some of these numbers may be a little bit off. We're gonna be analyzing this data, especially our end year data scores by grade, by class, and by individual student. We note that our grade one and five surpass their end year goal. However, we have a couple of questions that we want to get behind. Why do we have a winter to spring significant dip in grade two? And why do we flatline in grades three and four? Work to come. Our kindergarten literacy, we have January data because our spring testing is still in process. So this is based on, the kindergartners coming in and taking the phonological phonetic awareness test. Fifteen out of nineteen of our kinders who scored zero percent in the fall, came with absolutely zero percent of blending skills. Scored, six others scored a hundred percent. Then in January, four scored eighty, four scored forty percent, and one scored twenty percent. Thirteen out of nineteen increased their segmenting scores. That's segmenting words, letter by letter, and their sounds. Two scored a hundred percent, three scored eighty, three scored sixty, two scored forty, and three scored twenty. A particular note, when we analyze our data, five out of our A D L L students increased their blending and segmenting skills. So we're really proud of that, and we're obviously hoping for additional improvement as well with our little ones. In math, similar to literacy, again, the window's still open, and we're finishing up the makeup test for students who are absent. We're gonna be analyzing again by grade, class, and individual student. We have here our grade two surpassing their end year goal. Grade three, we noticed a steady improvement and just missed their goal, their end year goal. And then a couple of questions, again, why do we have a winter to spring dip in grades one, two, and five? Again, as you can see by the slide, we're using the STAR assessment as a tool to measure our achievement from our school improvement plan. And one little note there, that Ms. Borman, our math coach noted, grade four and five have not been implementing the new program at this point. So we don't have that alignment yet, hoping that that helps with our achievement in math. We also had a first grade math goal in our school improvement as well, plan as well. And you can see, this is based on the district grade one math benchmark. So in September, we had forty-one percent of our kiddos there meeting benchmark, and January, eighty-two percent. And maybe we still have pending, and Ms. Borman, again, the math coach, is anxious to see if we were able to even top that eighty-two percent. We had an end year goal of fifty-one percent, and so we clearly have surpassed that, and pretty excited about that.
I'm gonna discuss a couple of our special areas, the visual arts. We, I'm just gonna highlight a couple. We have Color Day, which each grade level is represented by a primary and secondary color, which is a school-wide, and it happens during our town hall event. And teachers dress up, the first year, teachers dressed up in crayons or more colors. I was actually the color wheel. And it's fun. We have a school-wide art show, Ice Cream Social, and I actually teach the staff how to create pieces of pottery that are then auctioned off. And it's a fun event, we're actually in the process of doing that this year for the upcoming art show. Our curriculum is designed around our national core art standards and common core, and our student mind objectives, and actually sets our mind with our district leaders. For music, every grade level has a performance, whether it is, pretty much, actually this year, they're pretty much all in the spring, but sometimes they're spread out. And then also this year, through Little Kids Rock, we received twenty-six ukuleles and twenty-six keyboards, and our students will be learning how to handle these instruments over the years, and learn to continue to increase in difficult musical genres. Physical education had a great year. Students analyzed their fitness scores and developed a program for improvement. I actually, with this particular physical education teacher, I have worked with him closely, and his, I'm going to her website, I'm sorry. Because he's a fabulous physical education teacher. And he really, his growth plan and his SLO, his action steps, are really focusing on the student's well-being as a whole. It's not just the activity, but it's really teaching them how to monitor who they are as an individual with their physical fitness. So it's absolutely amazing to see that happening within our elementary schools. Our PE department received a large grant from DEF and the mayor, Mayor Valton, this year to purchase heart rate monitors, audiovisual equipment. Students will also be able to monitor their performance in real life while projected on the wall. Students will learn about target heartbeat and exercise levels to maintain that level. Kids also participate in the Kids Marathon, which is on a volunteer basis, and at Pembroke, there's thirty-three participants. And they will participate in June at Fairfield, their last mile of the marathon. So that's an upcoming event. And participate, also participate in Jump Ropes for Heart. I'm not sure how much we raised this year, but usually Pembroke gives a very much. We also have a basketball clinic, and our PTO is very involved in organizing that, as well as the physical education teachers at Pembroke. And we also have volunteers from Danbury High School basketball team. And that's Mr. Casey Bach, who is one of the high school teachers. And also our culture.
Regarding school climate, we also have goals within our school improvement plan on that. We had our PBIST create a new ticket recognition program for our students. We have a student-based production team. All of the grades were highly interested in being recognized and earning the tickets. And students worked to fill up a container school-wide so that they could choose a school-wide reward. I think we've done an extra recess, and there was another game or something else that they had, that they had chosen. In the beginning of the wheel, the beginning of the school year, Mrs. Wade and PTO volunteers jumped on the Pin Wheels for Peace initiative, and you can see that in the photo, that's the front lawn of Pembroke there, right along Route Thirty-Seven. And that was a lovely way to start the year, the positive focus on peace and kindness. We would not be able to spotlight anything at Pembroke without our PTO. We have our president and members here supporting us as always, true partners in Pembroke. We are using our final, we have our final part of Chromebooks that the PTO has funded right off the bat in the beginning of the school year. So the final grade level that did not have access to the Chromebook cart was second grade, and it was the same, PTO made their day. We had those in place by, what, February? Took a little while, but yeah. Takes a little while, but by February. Now, every single grade level shares one part of Chromebooks or laptops, which is phenomenal. They also initiated a new fundraiser this year. It's a teacher or staff auction where staff members volunteer to either contribute something or most apparently contribute their time in some way. I think one of the favorites was Mr. Lambo and Mr. Victor doing a nail painting event with a couple of lucky winners. We cleared over two thousand dollars with this brand-new fundraiser. And when I say there's a hundred other events, that is not an exaggeration. They have a list of two-sided, eight and a half by eleven. And that's a photo of our second graders on their new Chromebooks. Enjoy your rooms.
Our instructional leadership team, I actually co-facilitated our, this team this year, and this was part of my O ninety-two internship. And it actually was a great experience for me, I'd say I learned a lot. On the team, we have different grade levels represented. We also have our special education teacher represented, literacy and math coaches, myself and Dr. Apple. Through this process, we've been developing, reflecting upon, and also adjusting our school improvement plan through this process. We've been analyzing student data to improve and improve our instruction.
The DataWise logo there is that we're using the DataWise process, which is our partner,
We also have a Pembroke instructional support team, which, for other schools, it's CST, Child Study Team, but ours is focused really on the instructional and supporting our staff. We have grade level teacher, actually a fourth grade teacher who's a coordinator, the literacy coach and math coach, and special education teachers, and Dr. Apple sit on this team. And they analyze individual student data to improve interventions to allow our students to be successful, and then monitor these interventions and track student growth. And then school governance, I'm actually the facilitator of, yes, I'm a volunteer in law, the School Governance Council. And this is my first year actually facilitating, and I am so happy with what we've accomplished. In previous years, we were able to have our parking lot repaid, excuse me, and then also the new security entrance into Pembroke, and that was installed last summer. And so there were two things that have come out of our School Governance Council. This year, we're actually getting in our courtyard, that's actually a picture of our courtyard on the opposite side, the installation of an outside classroom, which hopefully should be happening within a couple of weeks or so. And then another goal of ours is a future adaptive playground. And that, because Pembroke caters to specialty students that might need some adaptive equipment, we would really like to focus on retrofitting and actually getting our playground to include all.
So thank you for your time this evening, and I hope that wasn't too much. I think we were right on time. Does anyone have any questions? I don't know if you want any questions.
Just thank, just for taking the time to come to the forum.
We appreciate the opportunity, and I just hope you'll come and visit us in person. Be due to us.
While we're getting, I just don't think Rachel mentioned this about Apple, but Rachel is our element, so she works creating the schedule for the entire school system, working out the orders, working out professional development, and just generally helping. So goes to ask it busy first.
Okay, while we're setting up for the presentation, we asked, any student representatives here? Okay. Tell us, tell us where you're from.
Good evening, my name is Ian Cardo, and I'm the E O G secretary from Danbury High School. Seniors at junior school are winding down, and there's a roll in evolution about graduating on June nineteenth. Eighteen exams are coming to an end with only a few left to go. April fourth was the SATs for juniors, and scores have recently come in. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week. Each week, each day of the week, we've provided something different to treat our teaching staff. Monday was chocolate, Tuesday was lunch, Wednesday was breakfast, Thursday, there was letters that were made from all the students in Newbury High School and advisory, and we wrote them to each one of our favorite teachers, which is pretty nice. So they're getting rock. And Friday, those ice cream sandwiches. And construction at the building is making really good progress.
Thank you. Okay, DHS graduation report.
Right, Megan, here too, and Mr. Donovan, the presentation, they're here with any asking questions.
We know that the board was given a comprehensive report, it was set out under separate cover, so tonight, we just want to touch on the tips of the iceberg, because certainly Dan and Meg are here to answer any questions. He knows about the agenda already, so we're gonna do this pretty quickly. You have many graphs and charts here, this is a very complex area, we spent months, literally months, working through how to analyze what we want to state, what they mean by this word, what they mean by that. But what I can tell you is overall graduation rate for students of four years, which is, what we hope, kids will be on a four-year plan, a little bit over eighty percent, eighty point three percent. A question that's popped up is, is that a low number? Some of the students are like my son was in college, he was on the pilot plan, unfortunately. So when you add in the average high school students for a school goal after four years, it gives you another nine and a half percent. So suddenly, that number kicks up quite a bit. One thing that was asked, it was not too long ago, is can you compare a year to year to year? And the answer is no, there are different groups of kids moving through, a little different than what we look at test scores. You can look at timeline data, but the controls that we typically would have with academic achievement are very different than what we have with graduation rates. You'll see the term other, what does that mean? That's the state's nice way of saying you're out. We've taken some issue with the state on this, as many other districts have. If a student goes to adult education, we believe students continuing as their education, they count as a dropout. So that's been a challenge for us. When you talk about dropouts or others, it really is students who have dropped out, students who have gone out to adult ed. Students who have transitioned to another school system, so they've left us, and they say they're gonna be signing up in Water Bear, but they have never really signed into Water Bear, so they count against us as our dropout rate. Then there's a small group that really is unknown, that we haven't been able to track. So on the report that you were given, again, I just want to leave it ten to the time. We spent a lot of time with Dan and Meg, larger teams, some of the BS folks, some central office folks, asking the question, why are the kids dropping out at all? Because our goal always is to have a hundred percent of the kids graduating. We do have a group of kids, for a variety of reasons, as you'll hear in a minute, who basically age out by twenty-one, they have to have their twenty-one credits or they can't graduate. And what happens is, as they get closer to their graduation age, that we like the target, even closer to age twenty-one, they just will never earn enough credits. They realize that, so they just basically stop. We have some kids who are off track with their incoming, the kids they started with. So they see this mismatch, and they reported back to us that that's one of the reasons that I'm not on track with my own group, and I just don't want to finish this out. We are seeing a substantial increase, K to well, Kelly can certainly attest to this. Many of us at the cabinet have spent a substantial amount of our time this year thinking of kids who have higher emotional challenges, social challenges, and so we're seeing more kids come to school with these very challenging behaviors. Our most challenged group, that is the largest group representing our gap rate of English language learners, and again, there are a variety of issues with why those kids are R English Language Learners, and again, there are a variety of issues with why those kids are dropping out. We have kids coming to us that have no language whatsoever, no English course, but they also have dramatically interrupted schooling. But a student could come at age 15 and have gone through second grade, and that's it, immigrate to country. So how do we place them? If they're 15, we chronologically place them at high school. And if they come to us less than 30 months before their senior year, we cannot allow them, I'm just reading to you, state law also states that any old student has 30 months or less than 30 eligible to graduate, they are not permitted to be in flying pool class. That was a question that came up, why don't we put them in that private service? If they have less than 30 months before their end date, we just can't provide that. And so we have youngsters that do need that kind of support, but not able to give it to them. Much of the credit about Dan and Meg and Busto and Stacy Brugnolo and some others at the high school, we've put it in place as a district new commerce class. And this again addresses the kids who have been no formal schooling, or significantly interrupted formal schooling, or radical formal schooling. They come to us with basically no foundational skills whatsoever. One of the things that we've asked to consider is, we make the point, if a youngster is 14-years-old, we're gonna give them an extra year, a week to an extra year, a new school level, as opposed to being at Danbury High School, they have to earn credit from being one. So we give them a longer period of time. And then students who are 17-years-old and want to track, we're encouraging them to put to adult education, because we just think it's a better fit for them. You've heard us talk in the past about games like System 44 and Read 180. We had a web meeting today talking about math, never read that. We've done the same thing with literacy. Our instructional program is our instructional program. We work to make sure that it's a strong, viable, robust program. But there are kids that need supplemental support, kind of fingers in the holes in the diet. So a program like System 44, which is very low-level literacy skills-based program, is not our instructional program of choice. This is intervention we put in to help kids. A lot of aesthetic kids fall into that program. Our ELL kids can benefit from it. Our Read 180 is a higher-level literacy program, but really for kids who need interventions I think at this point, just again, because we really want to limit it to 10 minutes, probably best to open to kind of to the questions that you may have, Dan and Meg are here. Kelly's certain here.
Point I want to make as well, when you look at the data, there's two numbers in there, it says 80% and 77%. 77% is the district, which denotes youngsters who are placed outside of Danbury. But the kid, youngsters from Danbury High School are at the 80% rate. So that's one. Secondly, we have just, when a student registers, I don't know if you heard it though, and they do not come in with any credits, they are freshmen. They're freshmen, 17, 18, doesn't matter. They come in after freshman, you know, and they're not part of that cohort. It's a whole nother group that we're working with, and you're not even seeing it. So what they say to you is that the dropout rate is at a level which is pretty respectable. It's taking into account for those other youngsters as well, when they drop. But what you're seeing, graduation rate itself, only speaks to when they come in and they join the cohort of freshmen. And that's been our challenge. And having the center, the way we've reorganized the center, to thank Kim and Ann and Busto for that, we have a better handle on where kids want to be. And I think Bill's point that we discerned today, looking at this, they have a lot of sense for us, that if youngsters not 15, they haven't had formal education, that they spend some time with middle schools and the foundational skills. Once you throw them in high school, now they're in courses, and now they're on, as we talked about, right, they gotta be 19, 20, they can't leave with their class. So I mean, we just start, the kids are at, you know, in a bad way and sort of ways, so we're gonna make that site adjustment. Dan and Maggie here, any comments? We've had some lively debates about the pros and cons. This is not an easy situation here. You're looking at comparison data of things that are comparing apples and oranges. There are districts throughout Connecticut that have 90% achievement rates. And I'll go on record right now and say to you as a board, I thank you for making sure we don't have lower-level courses where kids can just spend their time and not be pushed. I think what you saw tonight is the best of the best, but it happens for all of our kids if they want that opportunity. When you look at the numbers that you're looking at, and we have a calling, all programs are not that way, they're different levels, and Danbury is there at one time. We left that, remember that, we all left that, at a risk. But I can say, the kids that go through your program are leaving the high school if they enter college, what's their rate of...
89%.
89% of your kids are going back for a second year after the freshman year. That's saying what we're doing in school is a good thing. We're still concerned that we're not getting more kids through, that's a goal of us. When you put it in perspective, I think teachers and the group up there are doing a hell of a job in what we have. And it's not just about putting kids in program. And you have after-school programs yet, before, you have a lot of things going on. So I commend you for that. So that's the ones we're looking at, this with some adjustments. Today, I did get some information, graduation requirements are gonna go to 25. I saw that we get to redefine, and so that's just another challenge that we're gonna have. It is what it is, you know?
I'm fully there.
Not full there, but you guys have any comments? So you're here, and I wanted you to listen in. Come up to the table. Can't sit, you're gonna make me speak, aren't you?
So the data that we've looked at is from the class of 2012. And so a number of things have happened in the high school since that group of students have moved through. And Bill mentioned the newcomers class, which was designed in response to the needs that we're seeing. The kids are coming to us differently, and they're gonna keep coming, so we have to provide something different to meet their needs. One of the things that we have done, that we see some good success with, is we've implemented something called Twilight Program. And so the credit clock starts, as Sal says, as soon as they come to us as freshmen. And that's a very big change for a lot of kids who have been sort of walk to lunch and walk back, and they come to the giant city that is Danbury High School. And so coupling that with students who are still trying to acclimate to this country, that newcomers class doesn't just deal with foundational literacy skills, numeracy skills, there's also an acculturation component to that, where the council is bilingual, which should then introduce some work. We saw, because students don't necessarily come to us the first day of school, that we needed to provide some additional supports, extended learning time for special populations, and this is one of them. And so in the Twilight Program, students who arrive too late in the semester to make up the credit are afforded the opportunity to stay after school in a blended learning model, which means some of it is done in the seated school, some of it is done online at home, but still monitored by the teacher. We implemented that in response to retention rates in ninth grade. You all know, if you can get through ninth grade on time, you're way more likely to graduate. And so we put a lot of energy around those kinds of creative extensions for students that were repeating ninth grade, and replicated that model through some funding, through the Title III grant, that is specifically for kids who are immigrants to this country. And so we have seen a nice uptick in that participation, and then also credit attainment. We also heard from Dr. Epple about the STAR scores, so we are also monitoring those quite closely, and are exceeding the expectations in most cases for the growth as compared to students across the nation. So the real-time indicators are showing that we're moving in the right direction. But it is important for us to remember, you know, what kids are dealing with. And so we're trying to address the whole student, in addition to the literacy part, and I thought that was worth a mention.
You know, one of the things I would like to mention also is, you know, we're talking about our significant dips in two populations, which are our special education, our ELL. And, you know, for the average student to go through Danbury High School takes four years. And we would expect that students with some of those disadvantages may take longer. So I was not super shocked when I heard this rate of 80%, which also is a comment of, it's not just the DHS, it's the rich students and the A students, all in that category. They don't have their own separate rates. But as Dr. Sal said, the clock starts freshman year. There are students that have a tough transition, there are students that cannot attain the skills needed to move on, which means in high school, you fail a class. But I can see much better at night knowing that if I have to keep a student here an extra semester, so they have better skills, and if they leave Danbury High School, whether it's four-and-a-half or five years, that they are prepared to go out into the world. And I understand it's a number, the number concerns me, because it's not where I'd want it to be, it's 100% would be a satisfactory number to me, nothing less. But I have to be real with myself, that all students are not gonna graduate at Danbury High School in four years. We did look at some comparative districts, us that had about 10% higher rate, around 90. We are in contact with them and asking what they do and how they do it, to figure out what we can do, and is it simple programming thing, or is it, you know, something a whole change that we have to come through? What we found out so far, and looking at them, is yes, they have a graduation rate about maybe 10 points, 8 points higher than us. But when we look at our SAT scores compared to theirs, we're even. We're two points ahead of them, they're two points ahead of us. So I try and figure out how their graduation rate comes out so much higher, but we're still scoring the same with them. So that's our next segment.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have a few. One, when you make a comparison, as you said, when you look at these other schools that have a higher rate than 90%, well, how do you compare, I mean, how do you evaluate that? I mean, not thinking just the academic thing, but your district or your school, I should say, is a very unique school. I mean, one, it's phenomenally unique because of the size and the diversity, and also the cohesiveness that students get together. But I would find it difficult to compare Danbury to Ridgefield, Danbury to Brookfield because of the makeup of the ethnic groups that we have. So our, I guess what I'm saying is, is best-case scenario, I mean, we know 100%, you know, maybe wishful thinking and the dream thing, but for our school, what would be a target that, let's say, five years down the road, you would set as a goal? Not comparing it to some other school that doesn't have the same base of diversity as we have. Is there any particular target date that, or target number, in terms of a percentage that you would like to attain?
100.
No, I understand, but I think that's...
Anybody sure of that? I said 90, I left out 10% of a population, which I won't do. An increase. I don't know if that's a 2% increase, a 3% increase, or a 5% increase a year, but to increase it and see what we need to tweak every year to make sure that, find something that works and keep building on that. We did have our deans, we had two deans that are no longer there, but we had a 9R population, and within two years, we built a 9R team, which was to keep an eye on them. And within two years, we didn't need that team anymore, because the deans worked with that population, duh, in an intense-type situation. One dean, like a counselor with almost 90 kids, that's it, or other counselors around 300. So they went home visits, set goals with these kids weekly and things like that. So we found that to work very well, so we're trying to find ways to put that back in.
Okay, in addition to the academic achievements, the, is there any, I was looking at this like going to work, you gotta like, you either like to go to work or you love to go to work. All right, so what makes loving to go to work a break? It's the environment. So in addition to the academic achievement of the individual, or their ability to achieve certain levels, is there anything that's done to sort of make education, you know, simplistically, make education fun? Welcome to Danbury High because it's a great place to be, it's a great place to spend your hours. That, I don't know whether you call it psychological, but it would be just that human type of thing to make someone, make a student, why don't you get up in the morning and say, it's great? You know, not only do we have to go to school to learn, but it's a nice environment to learn. You know, we've had excellent principals that make the overall ambiance or environment, you know, conducive for people wanting to go there. But are there things like that that are done?
Yes, absolutely. So our School Governance Council, one of the teacher representatives, she's also an ESL teacher. And so she works with our second learner, our second language learner population. And so as part of her work, they created a subcommittee to look at engagement of this population in particular. And so looking at how are we engaging, what can we do better, you know, for this particular population? And I think we were pleased and surprised to find higher satisfaction rates with our ESL students than we do with our English-speaking students. 87% reported feeling supported, and here are some ways that we think we can do more. So this year, we had a school-wide fair to welcome in families. We had bilingual tours that were led by students who participated in that survey. So they were able to welcome families in English, Spanish, and Portuguese. And I don't think we've ever gotten so much positive feedback from families thanking them for making them feel welcomed and valued. Stacy Brugnolo, our department head of ESL, she worked with staff last year to begin a special awards night for ESL students to celebrate their GPA attainment. This year, we coupled that with an international celebration. So I think that we have done some things to try and make school a fun, a fun place. One of the things that particularly ESL students were asking for is really, when we first get here, we need somebody who speaks our language in advisory. We retooled advisory to put students to the extent possible with a faculty who spoke Spanish with a Spanish-speaking advisor. And so I think we've made some of those types of adjustments to try and address what I think you're, what you're getting at.
One final question, when members teach the same, what is cohort?
I'm sorry?
Cohort.
Cohort, so it's...
I don't know what that...
The kids in, so we were talking about, once you are in ninth grade, so the kids who started ninth grade in 2016, they are our cohort, and they are expected to graduate in 2020. So it doesn't account for, as we talked earlier, students who arrive mid-year who are now, you know, that's a real, that's a real issue, overage and under-credited. And that's where we'll be putting our resources and our...
Just case in point, I have your next question, may I ask for it? Just for clarity, this year, we looked at that, how many students do we have?
We had 76 new arrivals in January and February and March.
Just so you get a sense of that.
38 of them had no credits.
So when they're coming in, they're on the clock.
And we're over 15.
They're on the clock especially. It's not because they started September 1st. So when they come in February, they can't obtain credit. So they're already, they're here, they're on the clock, but they're not gonna have any credits if they started in February. So that's why we came in with the Twilight Program, trying to get them credit. But even if they come in, hit the ground running, get all the Twilights, and most of them are gonna get is three credits for that second semester, there's still a freshman next year. Because there's no mathematical way for them to become sophomore. And that's 76, or 10% of that class is like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any studies as far as our school population that have come through the system? Or that have been in the system, say, through middle school and then into high school as far as their graduation rate? And is it, does it exceed the 80% average?
Sal talked about, right now, we're deep into that. That has to be done by hand. So that is a much more labor-intensive process, but the data folks are working on that now for us, because we have the exact same question.
Right.
So are we fairing better if they're with us longer?
Correct.
So we're in the process of looking, looking into that now.
Okay. Yeah, exactly, very.
Any other questions?
You know, where's that, where's that, where's that question, where's that?
Actually, I have a question. In the, in the information here where it says a third comparison, it says state of Connecticut, and then it has the percentage, is that the whole state, or just within a term?
That's the whole state. And so if somebody asks, you know, what's a good number? Yeah, 100, that's what we want. But we also take a look at, how is the state average performing? So we see the state average moving about 3% up, that's inclusive of the entire state. So we look at the rest of these districts in terms of markers, you know, how are we doing? So Dan, that's the SAT scores, there's another metric that we look at called On Track for Graduation. And so we are right on par with them. I mean, we're really with, I mean, we look at Norwalk and Stanford, and they're a resource, but we still look to them. We also look at Meriden, because of size, and New Britain. And so in all of those other indicators, you know, we're outperforming other districts on several of them. So I think it comes down to, how are you grading your students? You really... Really, it's how are you grading them? Are we giving Mersey Ts? You know, and the answer is no. You know, we want kids to be right. We don't want them to waste their time and their money in a post-secondary endeavor. And I think that our really good retention rate, persistence rate that go back for that sophomore year is sort of a testament to holding them to those high standards. You know, we detract, we open to access, and these students were part of that movement. You know, since this is my eighth year, our comp rate has doubled in high school. Doubled. And despite that, we're still maintaining. Are we happy? No. But against statistical odds, when you look at, you know, other districts across the nation with comparable demographics, I think we're on the right track.
But we don't track.
Right, but we don't, not that track. You choose your tracks.
I just want to add one additional thing. I think it's important to keep in mind, although you're asking for, like, the ideal number would be 100% graduation, particularly with our special ed population. Through their PPT meetings, we do have an obligation to consider transition planning for every student with an IUP. And what that means is you need to consider their post-secondary education readiness, their employability, as well as their independent living skills. And for many students under special education, we are through that PPT planning process determining that they need more time with us. So we sometimes, you know, agree along with parents and families and outside agencies that it is appropriate for students with special education needs to be in high school for six years. So I just want to bring that with another lens because I do not believe if we are in compliance with the federal law that we need to be, and I feel very strongly it's appropriate for many of those students. And I'm talking about the ones with more significant needs, that we are making conscious decisions to keep them in school longer because it's what's in their best interest.
So if you had to take a look at, like you mentioned before, like Norwalk, Stanford, you know, what would be the difference? I mean, you know, Danbury is unique, we know that. What would be the differences, like more resources, less special ed?
That's kind of what we're dealing with.
Because we look at the percentages, they're, you know, 10, 8, 10% higher.
I would love to add, if people would spend your column to that chart. Because absolutely, you know, they have, I mean, we're talking to the counselor case loads alone are smaller, you know. So I think it's absolutely a resource issue. I mean, if we had more resources, we could expand Twilight sections. We would reinstitute the dean model that worked for a big population of our kids. You know, and they're crying, we don't have, we don't have. But we're very creative with what we do have. And when we had the little pieces in place, we saw really good traction for that population. But they definitely have a different, they have two high schools. And so they just, they have one.
So do they have like a program, like you said, like, you know, like a Twilight program where it's...
No, Twilight, we made that one up. Yeah, we made that one up.
So what would they do with the kids that come in?
Well, they have different credit coverage.
You know, I was gonna say, like, what?
Yeah, so actually, Stacy was...
We're going, we're going...
She was answering, one was today and another one is next week. So we are asking, we are asking...
Specifically, what are they doing with their ELL population is what we're going down there for. I was no initiator down in Norwalk or Stanford and would send their ELL program.
Something is going on differently in terms of ways students matriculate ninth to 12th. No question.
Oh, you can see it.
And, you know, and like I say, I think for the board and for me, we need to look at the post-graduation rates in both cases. And I don't know what theirs are. So I don't think it's resources alone, I will say that. Let me say it that way. I think you're going to find that it's more the placement and it's also the matriculation ninth to 12th.
And when you guys, after you guys go visit, if you can...
Oh, yeah.
Just let me know. What's the deal?
Yeah, we have no shame in ceiling good models.
No, that's what you guys do. Mr. Ferguson?
Just real quick, so 89% retention for secondary college. And about how much, what is the percentage of our graduates who do go to college?
So the last data that we have, 68% matriculated within the first year. That's slightly down from where we have been, but also the economy has changed. I can say that 86% of our senior class has applied. That's going to be pushed for us. So maybe you can't afford college now, but let's get you through the application process while we're still here to provide you with assistance. And so this is the first year that we've been counting the applications. It's hard to get them to tell us sometimes that they've applied, but we have a system now I think that's working pretty well. So 86% of them have applied. And now we're doing a push-up. So where were you admitted to? And so hopefully, we'll have an update by the end of the year about the admissions.
Does 68% of us last year?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, guys.
Was the date of graduation issued?
What?
Was the date of graduation issued?
Nineteen.
Maybe it's...
No, back in the...
A little debrief.
I'll get to where you got it.
Yeah, instruction basis, there's a little...
We're all wearing a mask.
Okay. Superintendent, support.
I don't want to do a, yeah, it's kind of, high school construction update. Do you walk away?
Yeah.
Actually, you walked around, right?
Yeah, Mike and I walked around a long day.
Things...
Lot of steel there.
Steel, go ahead.
Getting hard hats on, aren't you?
Yeah, 55% done with the steel so far. Moving along, we had a meeting, let's say, last week now on the FFNE and the Black Box Theater. So the furniture fixtures and equipment is going to go into the new addition and also the Black Box. That's going up to the state fairly quickly for approval there. Moving along, right now, everything's on target. I mean, the goal is eternal is building, and that's April.
Pretty impressive, though, what they have going on there. Just moving steel around. If you have...
It's April, really? Yeah.
Wait, isn't that, isn't that, can I already know what you originally thought?
No, that's about the original. Because that'll open for the fall 18.
Oh, yeah, yeah, falling.
Fall in.
Do you want to mention the Black Box?
Black Box is under construction. We did the kind of plumer, Dr. Sal, myself, Dan, and Joe Fuller met on the layout and the design. It's moving along well. It's going to be basically two big hallrooms and a large, small stage, about 150 seats, thereabouts. So it'll be nice. We just, a good sign for some of our smaller things that we do up there.
And now, the next step is to do a study of this, correct?
Yes.
Come on with construction. A minute on the modules.
Portables at Chub Rock are done and moved in. That's the difference there. We are looking at a study of some portables at West Side. Side of the gym, there is a blacktop area over there. We're exploring at least that and another area on the grass. If we do possibly four or six classrooms out there for a small academy.
We think if the board wants so, we can do it. If we can put six there, that academy could get approached instead of 5,800. We had all asked in the beginning, when we put our specs, we're in 800 if you move.
We think it could be similar cost for a half $9 number or so to do six because we need bathrooms, one of the entrances is actually set bathrooms right near there. So people will work pretty well.
The last thing for space, because elementary space, the modules, trying to say helpful. Also, if things happen at the Sacred Heart with a sprinkling system, we may relocate some classes out of our elementary school there, opening up another five or six classrooms. And centralizing our preschool program, which helps with staffing and everything else. But that's kind of the way to do it.
While we're talking, City Fire March, I spoke today. He's checking NFPS, which is National Fire Safety Standards for schools. And he's reviewing, is it that Sacred Heart School, the second floor could be used for kids? Even if they do sprinklers and coves.
We'll give you update on that as we improve. Any questions about that?
Would the increase at, like, West Side, would that be to alleviate from all the schools?
Two minutes, dude.
Yeah.
Because, you know, when we built that, we've gotten down to almost 900.
Right.
Right, you know, and now they're approaching a lot of 100. Should go up. So that's, you know, that's, I don't say the problem, but that's the space challenges that we have. Create that there, that alleviate that. And that should help us for a number of years, according to the study that we had.
Oh, wow.
Thank you. Danbury Day.
It's May?
Carnival Day.
Pop candy, popcorn, fair food. Halloween is next Tuesday, May 16. It's a Danbury Fair theme. So we will have fair food, that's why we're joking about that. It starts at noon next Tuesday. Just, we've talked about this a lot recently. The purpose behind it is just to highlight our city and the unique needs and challenges that we have here. It's an event particularly for legislators to kind of tell our story to the rest of the members of the General Assembly and the people who work in the building at the Capitol. Although we want representation from Danbury in order to tell our story. So I know we're having a whole booth there. Chamber of Commerce having a booth, West Coast having a booth. We're honoring four longtime Danbury residents. We're honoring the six schools that were named by the State Department and had schools of distinction for last school year. And it'll last from around 12 to 13. And should be a good event. Informal mainly, but definitely something if you're around would be great to have you come up later.
We're, I don't think we're going to send many students up there, but there should be reps from Danbury. Any questions? Small Improvement Grant, Joe?
Small Improvement Grant, there, much like last year, we did have the opportunity to apply for about, at that time, a million four in funding for a Small Improvement Grant. It is due to the state May 30. We are working closely with the city on the approvals. We want to submit four. Right now, we're looking, exploring possibly tennis courts in the high school. They are in pretty sad shape and pretty much beyond repair. So I just wanted to tell the board we are working very closely with the city on it. It's going to be a hurried application, but it's going to come through the next meeting level list. It's going to be probably, I think, similar as we've done in the past. Tennis courts are probably relying on share about a half a million. The rest will probably be smart bathroom, tile, what we've been doing along the way. And any energy upgrades, we can kind of garner through that funding. We might have noticed it's going to be bonded is the other part of this, but we have, we have patient lists.
I just want to, I'm sorry. Someone had asked me, there's a charter school meeting tomorrow, the group. So we intend on continuing the process. Today, in the rescissions, I noticed that chart is for this year because they're in deficit. They did reduce some funding for charter. So as I told you a few months ago, even if they put an application in, probably looking three years down the road before approval, I think. But just, we want to get in the queue. You know, the expedition learning is what we're looking at. The teachers are still interested, we are. So tomorrow, they're going through and developing the application process, which has to come here eventually for approval to go forward. So hopefully, we'll have that done. The end's not here, it's going to escort the deadline, maybe sometime in June for us to get it up there. So that's going. I want to update you on the principal search. It's not terrible. Would you let the board know?
Yep, sure. We are proceeding pace. We're going to run three distinct panels. And all, at the cabinet level, we've done some screening. So we've got each school is going to have between five and six applicants on each panel. The panels have been set. There's three of you, I know Fred, Rob, and Hailene, I think there's the third. So we've distributed all the information. The interviews are going to run, I think, it's Wednesday and Friday of next week and then the following Monday. We're going to ask each panel of teachers to hold in avails an additional time in case we see any crossover, if there's anybody that we want to move to a different panel to interview. So we're going to see if we can't hold on to those dates. It's hard at this time of year because everybody's really going 100 miles an hour. But right now, we've got panels probably of anywhere from 14 to 18 people involved. So we're going to run through those starting next week. As I said, all the candidates were contacted. I believe at this point, I didn't check this section, but I think we've gathered back from everybody. We're going to do the writing sample, as we've done in the past. And that should go out, the first one will go out right before the weekend. And then we'll go ahead and roll through the process.
Did you hear that those candidates, did you mention how many applicants we had?
There's between five and six on each one of the three panels. So 15 to 18. I think we screened well over 100 people with all of the, with all of the different entries.
So it was a good, it was a good way to...
It was a healthy, well, I think it was better than we've seen in years past.
So of the 18 applicants we'll be interviewing, how many are internal?
I want to say two or three. Not much more than that.
Really?
Yeah.
Rob, PTO has a question. I'll hope you can respond. Would you like to raise your hand?
I don't think so. I can't answer.
Yeah, we could grab it, ask it, if you can't do it. Information?
No, I have, I wanted to talk about, A, the budget. You have before you something that I put out to all of you regarding some concepts. Everything is depending on the board approvals, obviously. But keeping in mind that we've decided with the city, you may recall, not to go down the path until we had better intel in terms of what we might need to do programmatically if in fact our budget was reduced. Well, one, you know what happened when the city council was reduced? We asked for 5.3 and we walked away with 2 million. So there's 3.3 million dollars that we're short. Mike's probably tired of hearing from me, but I keep saying, is there any news from Harvard? Because two things can happen from Harvard in terms of Danbury. If we receive our alliance money in whole, could be 8.4, 8.4 million dollars. Everything we've read has said Danbury was in line to get more money and it varied how much more money. So we're going to make some assumptions. And this is, and we're going to have a meeting, I hope, finance group to give us some ideas. Is to make some assumption in the stages of reductions. The first, if we assume we're going to get the money from the state, the alliance, I call it alliance money, ECS money. And the city has always passed it all through us. There has never been a challenge for Danbury. That money gets passed through. And we receive conservatively 2 million dollars more. Then the reductions, step one would be 1.3. Of course, the 2 million could be made up from the additional funds. So they don't have to be so draconian in the beginning. If we have an indication that we're going to get the alliance money, but as you had mentioned, maybe flat fund it, which is still a reduction because of the increase, then we have to go to the next stage of reducing 3.3 million dollars. So what I, what we've done is that other than a teacher leaving in the classroom and we know this kid's going to be there next year, we're not going to hire any new people. It's really put a bend in our recruitment and everything else that we have done. But we can't in good conscience hire people in, keep our staff whole, and suddenly find out, this is the scary part. Someone said we might know till, might not know till August, although I don't think that's accurate. That would really be horrible. And then cut them, cut them out. They're just not right. So we're going through the retirements and not filling them and then making decisions, okay, we need to fill that. For example, the high school with a nursery program. You can't find someone to run those programs. So we'll hire someone there. We need a sped teacher by law, we'll fill that. Things like that. Grade level, we'll fill that. But we're not adding new teachers, even on enrollment growth. We're just not going to do it. We'll save as many positions, God forbid we have to cut that. Then we're going to have, we're going to have to cut, as we've done in the past, not as deep, folks who are not working in classrooms directly every day, classrooms directly every day, but supporting the teaching and learning, and then they then will have to make up these positions that are empty. And if I don't save that for you, then we have nowhere to go but cut people. So that's what we have to talk about at the finance. So all this does is, and I sent it out to the administrators, um, I think it was yesterday, and sent it, giving, get, get, got it to finance committee last night to you. So that's sort of the strategy, um, in terms of where we're going. I don't know if you want to add it. Now, now, mind, be mindful, Joe just talked about that money for the construction. We're working with the city much like we did last year. We can do something and they can help us, we'll do that. We're looking at our rates in, in terms of the, our renewal. Uh, we're talking to their bus company. If you look at the last paragraph here, I've asked all unions, consider at least a one percent giveback in their salary increases for next year. As an idea. Normally we say, take a zero, that wins zero places, so this year I'm saying, consider a one percent giveback. We can, you know, in terms of having conversations. So we're looking at many things in terms of what we're gonna do. What you saw tonight was a reflection of the work that's going on. And I've said this time and time again, you have teachers bringing a lot of materials to school and doing things on their own. We have the PTO that are killing themselves giving us, thank you, resources that we sore need that we can't provide. So it's really, and I think, and I don't have to tell you where we are on the per people expenditure, relaxed, but, but we know Danbury gives eight out of every ten dollars. That's why we're fighting the CJ stuff. So, you know, uh, it's gonna be tough. So that's why we're relying on that Hartford money. And next Tuesday, we'll, we'll tell that story. Joe, Bill, or Kim?
You write a bit about South Minnesota. The one three is a good line to, to start chopping through. Below the one three, it's, it's, it's ugly at one three, below, below one point three million if we don't see that two million-ish in the state, and it's gonna be, that's gonna be rough for the guys.
So we'll need a finance group.
Yeah, whatever.
And a lottery numbers.
Come on, it's board chair, you know, board chair reports.
Thank you. I don't, I don't, I don't have anything else.
On that, though. So just, uh...
Uh, no, I just, yeah, just a minute. No, this...
Board Chair Morrison's report, uh...
So for, so for the finance committee, would you guys be available eight thirty Tuesday morning?
I will.
David, no?
No.
After?
No.
All right. Can we do Tuesday afternoon?
What's the question?
Do you get four o'clock?
Can I phone in?
What?
Can I phone in?
Well, you're, uh, no big deal, it's like, you know, but, uh...
Is that, is that the players?
That, that afternoon.
Fine. I know, but would you be up at the Hartford? You'd be up at Hartford, right? I'm sorry?
There's a, that's a, it's a, it's a part of that.
No, I, I mean, I, I could probably be able to make that for, so I mean...
I saw, on Monday?
Tuesday night?
Five or six on Tuesday night?
Monday?
Monday, Monday.
Monday, Monday is the...
Monday will be the...
Your Dan will run Saturday.
Oh, the right, you're...
After five, I think.
Yeah, but, yeah, that's over four thirty.
It's ninety-four to twenty-fourth meeting, or we have...
Oh, actually, we got it, they got it before twenty-fourth. That's what I'm trying to...
Well, I meant to, we did it before, before that meeting.
David, what time Monday, any chance? No?
I can do eight o'clock in the morning.
Yeah. No, I'm thinking Monday, day...
If you do first thing in the morning, I can do Monday.
Right. Monday at eight, got you?
I can't get away now, I have a huge job at work, I can't leave.
So we're four out of five regardless, we go. Monday morning, eating it. Four out of five is the most we're gonna do. I'll see you.
Is it just the committee?
Yes.
Word of the day.
Oh, words and rights.
No, well, invited, yeah.
What, what's not wrong?
I'm not really invited.
Yeah, yeah.
It's too early for numbers.
So Joe, Monday at eight, works, uh...
For a while.
Coffee and...
Somebody already told us exactly.
Don't say that.
Okay.
Rob?
Okay, first, I want, I want to do Memorial Day, Danbury, before we do, I have a quick thing on expulsion areas, but, um, I want to get a hard commitment for who's gonna go. Michael's going, he's marching with the elected official, the statewide people, forgive the...
I'm not going.
Okay.
I am going.
I mean, I, I was planning on, Pat?
I'm going.
Okay. No, someone else? Okay. So Pat, so can you, uh...
Yeah.
Because you know I can't walk down, I'm not walking that long.
No, I got a, I got a skateboard and a rope.
Okay.
Well, that would be fun.
If you could pull it...
I want to share on skateboard.
We got, we got, we got some...
So you, you got, you got, you got...
Can't afford the gas.
Can you drive, you think?
Yeah.
Well, then we won't have to rent a, a second, uh, car.
No, you just, three of us? I don't know if I need to repair my...
Monday is...
I don't know.
We can fit four people, as long as I sit in front.
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
Expulsionary.
Okay. Expulsionary, this one, I just wanted to, uh, Fred and I were talking a while ago about the expulsion area, it seems to be the same.
Sorry.
You good?
Yeah.
Expulsionary seems to be the same, three or four people that continue to do them, and, um, we kind of talked about if we could have like a running, kind of like a rotation